I'd like to call the Sebastian City Council meeting for February 28, 2024, forward please. I stand for a meditation by Dick and Todd from hell. And then call it by the way you feel by coming to the house.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for all the people that have assembled here tonight. People who have been willing to accept the burdens of authority in local government, business endeavors, human services, and law enforcement. We ask for your holy presence to guide us in discussion, consideration, and decision of those things that are up before us this evening, accomplishing your will in all those matters. Grant us patience, a willingness to listen, and an honest respect for the needs and concerns of those who are affected by our actions. Grant us wisdom and foresight in all that we seek to accomplish. And at the end of the day, grant us all a safe journey back to our homes and loved ones and refreshment and renewal to accomplish your will in the days to come. We also beseech you to grant continuous protection for those whose tasks may place them in adversity or jeopardy, especially law and code enforcement, fire, safety, and medical personnel. Guide us all as we walk the path that you have placed before each of us. We pray these things in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Dodd, Vice Mayor Dixon.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember McPartland.
Here.
And Councilmember Nun.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, this, you're not on. Mercy, not on. Does anyone have any agenda modifications they'd like to make? No one?
No.
Counsel? All right, thank you then. By unanimous consent, the agenda is adopted. Now we have a couple, well, we have several proclamations, but tonight I'd like to invite the chief up. He has two life-saving awards that he's going to present to some officers from the Sebastian City Police Department.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Hello?
Not on.
Hello? There it goes. All right. So, we've had a few incidents recently. We have incidents on a weekly basis, heroic incidents, and a lot of good work done by the police department. And fortunately, we get to recognize these employees in public. Ironically, most of our employees don't like to be recognized in public, so it's going to be difficult for some of them, but it's definitely necessary. There's a lot of good work going on, like I said, and I'm honored to work and serve these employees, and I'm really proud, and I'm excited that they get recognition. So, without further ado, I'm going to begin with the first incident. On December, it's a life-saving award for two dispatchers and a police officer. Dispatcher Joanne Patterson, dispatcher Bonnie Hughes, and Officer Matthew Didier. On December 29, 2023, dispatchers Joanne Patterson and Bonnie Hughes received a 911 call in regards to a subject who was having difficulty breathing. The subject had placed a zip tie around his neck in an effort to take his own life. Using special technology, dispatchers Patterson and Hughes triangulated the call to locate the citizen and quickly dispatched Officer Didier to that location. Officer Didier responded to the area and located the distressed individual. He then immediately took surgical shears and cut the zip tie from the victim's neck, clearing his airway while also injuring himself in the process. Without the outstanding coordination from the dispatchers locating the subject and signifies the life-saving award, a certificate, and then are also given a chief's coin. immediately sending Officer Didier to this area, the subject may have not survived. Please help me congratulate them on a job well done. The next incident involved Officer Antosia and Officer Buffington. Unfortunately, Officer Antosia couldn't be here tonight. He had a family obligation. He was unable to make it. So here are the details for the second incident. On January 13, 2024, the Sebastian Police Department received an emergency call for service on Barker Street. The caller advised that she'd just arrived to find both of her grandparents unconscious and unresponsive for unknown reasons, along with their dog, who had been inside the house. Upon his arrival, without hesitation, Officer Antosia entered the residence and quickly determined there was an active carbon monoxide leak. Despite the obvious danger, Officer Antosia quickly took action and began to remove the individuals from the house. Officer Buffington soon arrived on scene and assisted Officer Antosia with removing the two individuals and their dog from the residence. Both officers re-entered the house multiple times to retrieve the occupants, as well as open the doors and windows to vent the house from the carbon monoxide. Both residents were transported to medical facilities, where they're in the process of making full recoveries due to the officer's courageous actions. Please help me congratulate Officer Buffington and Officer Antosia. Before the, well, we'll take the picture with, there's a family member here that wanted to speak on behalf of the two individuals, and if that's okay with the council, I'd like to bring him up for a couple minutes. Mr. Dillon, would you like to join us?
Just want to say thank you to these officers very much. The world would be tremendously different if it wasn't for their air of wisdom, their speed, their training, and their initiative to go into a house dangerous like that. My daughter-in-law arrived at the house and within a few minutes realized that something was wrong. She just spoke to them a few minutes beforehand, and everything was fine. The dog was out inside the door barking. By the time she went around back, the dog had already passed out. She went into the household, so everything was split second. If these officers, thank you.
Okay, I've got a couple of proclamations I'm going to come down front and do. Okay, this first one is a proclamation for Irish American Heritage Month. I look around, there's a lot of Irish people in here, I think. It's probably so. But I'm going to present this to Mary McCain, McCady, if she'd like to come forward, please. These numbers astound me when I read this. You'll be surprised. All right. Whereas the first Irish came to Spanish La Florida in the 1500s, they first served as missionaries, mercenary soldiers, planners, traders, businessmen, doctors, and administrators. And whereas by 1776, nearly 300,000 Irish nationals had immigrated to the American colonies and played a critical role in America's war for independence. And whereas, five signatures of the Declaration of Independence were Irish descent, and three signatures were actually born, three signers were born in Ireland. And whereas, Irish Americans helped to fashion the system of government for our young nation, and 22 presidents have proudly proclaimed their Irish American heritage. And three of the Spanish governors of La Florida were actually Irish military officers. And whereas, Irish Americans have provided leadership and service to the nation's political, business, and religious establishments since America's inception, it is fitting and proper to celebrate the Irish cultural heritage and many valuable contributions of Irish Americans. Now therefore, I, Ed Dodd, do hereby proclaim March 2024 as Irish American Heritage Month in Sebastian, and ask our citizens to celebrate and promote cultural heritage of Irish Americans in our community. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Sebastian to be affixed this 24th day of February 2024. Thank you. Thank you very much. Want to do a picture?
Sure.
You want to say something?
Sure.
Okay, hold on a second. I'll get you a mic.
Wow.
So, my name is Mary McNamie. I am the president of the Ladies Ancient Order of Hibernians here in Indian River County, and I just want to say thank you very much for this proclamation and acknowledging the Irish American Heritage Month. We are a national organization. We have divisions across the United States. I'm really proud to be part of Indian River County. While we have national charities we support, we also support local charities. And just to name a few, we support Indian River County Little League, Sebastian River High School softball team, Michael J. App have a heart foundation, cancer societies, veterans councils. It's kind of limitless for us. We're always looking to help anyone we can. Our goal, while is promoting Irish American culture, our real goal is to support our community and make it a better place. So, thank you.
Thank you. I get it. Okay, the second one, I believe Senior Resources Association members are here for this. This is a proclamation celebrating the Older Americans Act and Nutritional Program. Whereas on March 22, 1972, President Nixon signed into law a measure that amended the Older Americans Act of 1965 to include a national nutritional program for individuals 60 years and older. And whereas, each year, Meals on Wheels programs join together for the March for Meals Awareness Campaign to celebrate its success and garner the support needed to ensure that critical program continues to address food insecurity and malnutrition, combat social isolation, enable independence, and improve health for years to come. And whereas, Indian River County's Meals on Wheels program has served our community admirably for over 50 years, and in the past year have provided 106,980 meals to 829 clients. And whereas, in the past year, 236 individuals have volunteered, a total of 18,866 hours delivering nutritious meals to seniors and individuals with disabilities, helping them maintain their health and independence. And whereas, Meals on Wheels programs in Indian River County deserve recognition for the heroic contributions and essential services that they have provided, and will continue to provide to local communities, our state, and our nation. And whereas, the senior population is increasingly, oh, yeah, increases substantially, and action is needed now to support local Meals on Wheels programs. That is increasing substantially, getting larger. Meals on Wheels programs through federal, state, and local funding, volunteering donations, and raising awareness to each of these vital services can continue to be delivered for years to come. Therefore, I now, Ed Dodd, as Mayor of the city of Sebastian, do hereby proclaim March 2024 as a month celebrating the Older Americans Act Nutritional Program, and urge every community member to take this month to honor the Meals on Wheels programs and seniors they serve and the volunteers who care for them. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Sebastian to be affixed this 28th day of February 2024.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a program you want to do? Did you have a program that you're going to run?
Yeah, I just want to have a few words.
Okay. You can mark here first.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I'm Karen Deagle. I'm the CEO of Senior Resource Association, and this year, Senior Resource Association, we're actually celebrating our 50th anniversary. So we have been providing Meals on Wheels, services like Meals on Wheels, for over 50 years in our community. March is a very important time for SRA, and we join thousands of other Meals on Wheels programs across America, creating the awareness of senior hunger, and we do have senior hunger here. With our aging population, one in every four individuals are over the age of 60, and now more than ever, Meals on Wheels serves as a lifeline to countless older adults in our community. Like the mayor stated, we did serve over 106,000 meals this year to over 800 seniors in our community. And this is providing a hot meal five days a week to these individuals. On the weekend, they do receive, on Friday, they receive a hot meal and two frozen meals to hold them over for the weekend. But as you know, this program is more than just a meal. It's also about that wellness check. In a lot of cases, these individuals, the volunteer is the only person that they see each day. They, their family may not live here, they're homebound, they can't get out. And so it's a really important program that when our volunteers do visit and bring that hot meal, they're also providing that wellness check, making sure that they're okay. So, we provide well over 450 meals each day, and that is done, it would not be accomplished unless we had wonderful volunteers, like Brian, who volunteer to deliver the meals. We have well over 200 volunteers doing that, but we are looking for more volunteers. That sounds like a lot, but when you think about having 49 different routes each day to take those 450 meals out, a couple hundred is just not enough. So please, if anybody's interested in becoming a volunteer, we really do need your help. Your community needs your help. Only takes a couple hours, you have the chance of volunteering one day a week, one day a month. It's really your schedule. You just have to deliver the meal between 10 and 1 o'clock on that day. I'd like just to take a moment, just a real short video. It really provides an insight. It's one of our clients that wanted to let you know how important this program is.
Okay.
I think I did that right. I was told to press the space bar.
Press the space bar?
That's what I was told.
Let's see what happens.
Okay. Oh, good.
Okay, now we have help.
I told you.
It was a bit more complicated.
It was.
My parents, back then, were getting sicker and sicker. I decided, you know, it's time to go look after them. And so I started looking around, and I saw this apartment, these apartments. They were only 575. I've been here eight years, and the rent is now almost 1,200. Takes half of my pay. I have lights, phone, cable, you know, I have a truck. It's paid off, but I have insurance on it. I have almost nothing left. And I have prostate cancer. I've lost two wives. So I'm here all alone. I was already living on a tight budget, and all of a sudden, I just didn't have enough food to eat. I lost 10 pounds. And Meals on Wheels was magical. They came to the rescue. They brought food. That day, I'm really grateful that Meals on Wheels is available, that Meals on Wheels is here to help people. They helped me. You know, it's like a family. You know, I look forward to seeing them every day. Meals on Wheels is a life saving.
You know, he talks about the rent, and that's, you know, we talk about our situation with increased prices and home, not having enough homes for individuals. And this is one of the situations we're facing with a lot of seniors, that their rent has increased so much that they have to make choices between buying food for themselves, medication, and being, having someplace to live. So, you can help. We do want to say, next week, March for Meals, we are having what we call our March for Meals, which is on March 5, 6, and 7. We invite people from the community, and I know a lot of you have been invited, and some are able to come and join us. And basically, what we're, we like to do is introduce you to the meal program, and you have the opportunity to go out and deliver a meal with one of our volunteers. So if anybody's interested, please give us a call at our main number at Senior Resource Association. And we thank you very much for the proclamation and for all your support for this program.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Got it.
Thanks so much.
Thanks. This is not being presented to everyone, to anyone, but this is flood awareness week. Whereas the city of Sebastian has experienced severe weather in the past, and from, in the past, in the form of extreme rainfall, tropical system events resulting in flooding in both coastal and ravine areas. And this flooding has caused damage and flooding losses to homes and buildings in all areas, whether they are high-risk, special flood hazard areas, or low to moderate risk flood zones. And whereas, the city of Sebastian is a voluntary participant in a national flood insurance program that provides residents with the opportunity to protect themselves against flood loss through the purchase of flood insurance at reduced insurance premium rates. And whereas, since public education and awareness of potential weather hazards and methods of protection are critical to the health, safety, and welfare of residents, and Florida Flood Plane Manager Associations has declared the week of March 10 through 4, 2024, as flood awareness week to promote awareness and increase knowledge of flood risk, the availability of flood insurance, flood protection methods, and how to prepare for flood emergencies. Now therefore, I, Ed Dodd, do hereby proclaim March 4 through 10, 2024, as flood awareness week in conjunction with the Indian River County Emergency Management. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Sebastian to affect this 28th day of February 2024. Just as a side note on that, for people who haven't lived in Florida a long time, if a hurricane floods your house, hurricane insurance won't cover it. They're going to want you to have flood insurance. And so, you may not live in a flood area, but I think the last hurricane that hit the West Coast caused a gigantic bowl of water to hit some cities, and a lot of those damage was not covered by their homeowners flood policy, I mean, homeowners insurance policy. It was going to take flood insurance to do that. So, you might want to consider the possibility of a low-cost flood insurance policy. Okay, thank you. Now we have a, we have a special guest, the county administrator, John Tanatic. If, I'm not saying that right, I know, but I'll let you correct me when you come up. Titanic.
Mr. Mayor, it's Dicanich, and don't worry, I mess it up sometimes. My poor wife went from Davis to Dicanich.
Okay.
So, and at the time, she was a community policing officer, and those poor kids trying to pronounce her name was just, it was horrendous. Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to take the opportunity to come before you and council and citizens and discuss a matter that came up recently regarding the extension of the sewer line to No Name Bar. The county did extend a two-inch force main line in the right-of-way, which abuts the property line of Mr. Gilliam's establishment. It was an extension of 100 linear feet to avoid and ensure there's no question that Mr. Gilliam has to connect to the county's sanitary sewer system. It is important to note that the county did not connect Mr. Gilliam's to the county's sanitary sewer system. County utility staff met with Mr. Gilliam's on January 3, which was prior to him appearing before the Board of County Commissioners on January 23, of 24, of 2024, which was one day before he came to this meeting and shared his comments. In addition to discussing connecting to the county sewer system, he requested a fee reduction or provide, or be provided some financial assistance, of which staff informed Mr. Gilliam that could not, that was not possible. Mr. Gilliam's is still responsible for all private costs to connect to the sanitary sewer system. He's responsible for paying the required connection fees, which is $5,329, and impact fees, $8,308. He did inquire, and he subsequently agreed to finance those impact fees, which is structured in an agreement. It's a simple interest loan over a five-year period, and there's a lien placed on his property. The connection fees offset a portion of the expenses incurred by the county to extend the sewer line. The pipe sections generally come manufactured in 100-foot sections, and that's why the 100-foot section was extended. While Mr. Gilliam's was issued a utilities connection permit on January 17, he's yet to pay his connection fees, thus he has not connected to the county's sanitary sewer system. The decision to extend the sewer line was based on what arguably may be some ambiguity in state law and the county's code of ordinances. Briefly, the statutes provide that an owner of an on-site, or a septic system that needs repairs and modifications to function in a sanitary manner must connect to an available, and that's a key word, sewer system within 90 days. County code provides no connection of existing structures will be required to be made unless capacity is available. Moreover, the statutes then say additionally, provide an establishment be within 50 feet of the property line of the establishment as assessed by the right-of-way. So based on the interpretation and the opinions of the county attorney's office, the county utility department did, they proceeded with the extension of the line to ensure connection to the system, as it eliminated any argument Mr. Gilliam's could raise concerning the availability of sanitary sewer to serve his property. This was obviously especially concerning to all, given the gravity of the pending order by the Indian River County Environmental Control Hearing Board to abate the sanitary nuisance created by Mr. Gilliam's to connect to the sanitary sewer system, and specifically the environmental conditions that he's created by virtue of maintaining it in such a manner. On January 18, unbeknownst of the pending request to speak before the Board of County Commissioners that was submitted by Mr. Gilliam's, utility staff met to discuss the cost of extending the line from the stubout along Harrison to a point where it would connect with No Name Bar property. County utility personnel performed the work, except for the board, that was performed by a contractor. The contractor provided the quote on January 18. The requisition was entered into the system on January 19, and the purchase order was issued on January 23, and the efficiency of government in this time worked, and then the contractor started work on January 24. That work started the following day after the commission meeting. It was merely a coincidence. This was all in motion before he spoke. Mr. Gilliam's appearance before the Board of County Commissioners had no bearing on the decision to extend the sewer line. He asked the Board of County Commissioners the same request that staff refused, to provide him a reduction in fees or financial assistance. Mr. Gilliam's appearance, and more specifically, his comments before this body and your citizens do not reflect what transpired. He exaggerated the circumstances and the events. Lastly, I would like to confirm, because some have asked the question, county staff was never directed or contacted by any member of our Board of County Commissioners to assist or provide any assistance to Mr. Gilliam's. Moving forward, I've had discussions with our staff, our senior staff, and it related to sensitive matters of, like this nature, and I trust that in the forward, that they'll be elevated to county administration, and I certainly trust my comments can bring clarity to this matter, to this board, and any concerns that the council or citizens may have. And certainly, it's unfortunate that it had to come to this, but I do apologize that the information was presented to you that wasn't fully accurate.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. You'll have a wonderful evening, and I want to congratulate you all on your centennial celebration. Thank you for the pin, and we'll wear it proudly throughout the county.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think our city manager has a couple of introductions he'd like to do.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, we started kind of this process at the last
the commission meeting. It was merely a coincidence. This was all in motion before he spoke. Mr. Gilliam's appearance before the Board of County Commissioners had no bearing on the decision to extend the sewer line. He asked the Board of County Commissioners the same request that staff refused, to provide him a reduction in fees or financial assistance. Mr. Gilliam's appearance, and more specifically, his comments before this body and your citizens do not reflect what transpired. He exaggerated the circumstances and the events. Lastly, I would like to confirm, because some have asked the question, county staff was never directed or contacted by any member of our Board of County Commissioners to assist or providing the assistance to Mr. Gilliam's. Moving forward, I've had discussions with our staff, our senior staff, and it related to sensitive matters like this nature. And I trust that in the forward, that they'll be elevated to county administration, and I certainly trust my comments can bring clarity to this matter to this board and any concerns that the council or citizens may have. And certainly, it's unfortunate that it had to come to this, but I do apologize that the information was presented to you that wasn't fully accurate.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. You'll have a wonderful evening, and I want to congratulate you all on your centennial celebration. Thank you for the pin, and we'll wear it proudly throughout the county.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, I think our city manager has a couple of introductions he'd like to do.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we started kind of this process at the last council meeting of introduce, formally introducing staff that will have a pretty significant role before city council and before our members of the public. So tonight I have two members, new members of our staff to introduce. The first is our new Procurements and Contracts Manager, Jessica Graham. Jessica, if you could just stand up and say hey. So Jessica actually started with us a little over a month ago, and she came to the city with over 12 years of government experience in purchasing and procurement. And I know she's hit the ground running. She's got a lot to get accomplished. She is kind of redoing our template process for RFPs, RFQs. She's already stepped in and been a big help to all of our department directors in in our procurement process, and also looking at our procurement policies as we continue to go forward. So with that, Jessica, welcome to the city of Sebastian, and we look forward to having you, improving our process as we go forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. The second staff member that we have is kind of a, it's a brand-new position. We did not have this second position prior to this new staff member joining us. Avery Gins is our new communications and social media coordinator. You know, kind of one of the things that we've looked at from the city standpoint is we want to improve our efforts to get the information out to the public, be as transparent as possible, and really start to recognize the work that our employees are doing, and show that recognition out social media and getting information out to the public. So I know Avery is, she started last week, yes, last Tuesday, and she's hit the ground running. If you look at our Facebook page, she created a brand-new Instagram page, and a lot of other things are going on behind the scenes. But she has really picked up the efforts in our social media platforms, and we're looking forward to great things as she continues to go forward. Avery joins us, joins the city as a UCF journalism graduate with various experiences as she went through college. So welcome to the city of Sebastian, Avery, and we look forward to continuing your efforts with social media communications.
All right. Madam Vice Mayor, would you like to read the brief announcement?
Sure. Okay, so this Friday, March 1st, the Chamber of Commerce Concert in the Park Series is going to host group therapy from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. I already checked the weather. It's going to be 78 degrees. March 9th to 16th is the Presidential Preference Primary Early Voting Holding here in council chambers from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And then Tuesday, March 19th, is the Presidential Preference Primary Vote at Your Local Precinct from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. So find your precinct at www.voteindianriver.com.
All right, thank you. We're now open for public input. Anyone from the public who would like to address the council, like Frank, about anything that's not, yeah, about anything that's not on the agenda today. Yeah.
Frank Nolan. Before I speak about the Point in Time Count, a couple of things. A few months ago, I sent y'all, including the city manager, an email requesting that maybe we should have the seminar that Jason Gilletin and several people put together a few years ago on substance abuse and mental health. And tonight, just told you about it. I mean, I think it's something I think you all need to think about doing, because you never know. If you do this seminar again, there might be someone that you could help, you know, that they don't know anything about it. I hope you also get involved with the Meals on Wheels, because that's very important. And the Senior Resource Association is a big place in my heart, because my mom went there before she passed away. And I'm very proud of Karen's assistant, who really works very hard and does a lot. And she's helped me out with the homeless population and the seniors. And Karen's assistant's my sister. I want to thank Bob, when we did Point in Time Count, he and the gentleman from the Homeless Trust went out for five hours. They went out from 5:00 to 10:00. And he'll tell you that one of the first people we found was a 67-year-old lady and her 70-year-old husband who has dementia. They can afford rent, but they can't afford first, last, and security. Now, I didn't ask this lady if I can mention her name, so I won't, but Fred knows her. And this lady went and talked to her and asked if the man was a veteran. And he thought he was, but he didn't remember. She got him a, an appointment with someone from the VA, and he is a vet. So he'll get some more benefits, and hopefully that will help. Now, with the Point in Time Count, they went out from 5:00 to 10:00, Bob, the old guy, and then I did my thing. I was out there from 7:30 to 2:30 in the morning. And I blew it this year. I'll tell you what, I just blew it, because I only found at that night 19 people in Sebastian. And there's a lot more, because the next night, actually the next day, I totally forgot about this, this family in a van. And I sent Bob a message, and he went out right away, because it's a young man, his girlfriend, their two-year-old, and their newborn. Baby was born in December. That's homeless. And he went right out over to it. But I went to check on that elderly couple, and all of a sudden, there's eight more people that I didn't see that night. Then, there's a family with a mother, father, 18-year-old, and her two-year-old child sleeping either in the woods or in their car, right here in Sebastian. We, you know, there's a 79-year-old man that's sleeping out in the woods. And there's, this year, there were four 18, 19-year-olds who are seniors at the high school. But here's another reason why you should have something on substance abuse. They don't want to live with their parents, because their parents are addicts. And they want to get their act together and do what they gotta do. Now, people ask me why I don't talk about the chum bucket. And there's 95, if you ask the high school, they'll tell you that there's 95 students involved in the chum bucket. The federal government says they're not homeless, because they have a roof over their head. All right, and yes, some are. I'd say, and according to these four seniors, there's probably five or six more that are out somewhere. Unfortunately, I haven't come across them yet. And, but these four come in to Dunkin' and let me know what's going on. And those that were home, slept in their cars last year, which there were three, they come in and let me know what's going on. So we need to really think about doing something to help everyone, you know, when it gets, when it gets cold. Now, Chris hooked me up with a lady that makes sewed 25 hats. They went right away. There's another lady that made blankets, and I gave those out. But we need to do something to just help people. We need to, I know you go to meetings, and it's about affordable housing and all this other stuff, but to me, and I know I'm old and cranky, we need to stop meeting, and we start to do it. I may be from the ocean state, but it's still some point where I think I should be from the show-me state.
Okay, Frank.
You know, because something has to be done. And I know your hands are tied on a lot of things, but somehow you got to untie them and help people.
Can you wrap up?
All right, all right. Thanks for the time.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else want to speak? No? Okay. Anyone on Zoom?
I have two with their hands raised.
Okay. Can you let the first one in?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello, I would like tonight-
Can you identify yourself, please?
Pardon me?
Can you give us your name and address?
Yeah, Jim Conley, and I'd rather not give my address publicly.
That's fine. That's fine.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to use my time tonight to ask the council to please consider drafting a resolution to dedicate June 8th as USS Liberty Day. I think that our troops deserve to be acknowledged for their service. And a little background on that to maybe help with the wording on the resolution. There's actually a website, justiceforliberty.org, that has a lot of good, accurate information, and it also contains a pretty good documentary that contains interviews of the survivors of the USS Liberty. But anyway, it was basically a day, June 8th, 1967, where Israeli forces tried to sink one of our Navy ships, killing 34 Americans and wounding 174 others. I'll keep it short. I'm just leaving it that since I gave you all the information. Thank you.
Thank you. Bring the second one in.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes. Can you give us your name, please?
Absolutely. My name is Molly Cogner. Did you need my address, or?
No, that's fine. Go ahead.
Okay, fantastic. Today, I really want to talk about free speech. Recently, in Florida, there was a bill passed that I find very scary. I'm sure you've heard of HB 269. Basically, in an essence, it makes passing out flyers a hate crime. And I find that really scary, because if a flyer is nothing but information, what you're doing is not only censoring, not only censoring people, but you're censoring free thought. I understand this is a, not exactly an issue that maybe you can handle yourself, but I think it'd be a great thing if local communities could really stand up against things like this. I find that we're getting closer and closer to living in a communist state. I mean, the moment that I can't express a thought without potentially it being a hate crime, that's scary to me. I don't know about you guys.
Let me interrupt you a second. It's not that I don't disagree or don't agree with what you're saying, but it's not really something that the council can do anything about. I would suggest that you write your local congressman, both state and federal, and ask that they try to, they try to do something about that.
Yes, sir. Well, personally, I was just wondering, because I find that there's city councils all over the U.S. who, I mean, they pass resolutions on things like a ceasefire in Gaza. So I'm wondering, is there something that on a community level that we could do? Just to, as a community, a resolution, a something, a statement that would say that we're not for this? Because at the moment, and we're having our rights trampled. And I understand it's not something that necessarily you can do anything about, but just to show that you support your constituents and their right to free thought, I think would be incredibly powerful. And I think it is something that you have the ability to do. If councils all over the U.S. can say that, you know, people should put down guns in Gaza, that's across the sea. So if they can do that, I feel like us as a community could say, we have the right to free speech. I mean, even Supreme Court justices have said this time after time. I'm not even sure how it's constitutional for bills like this to be passed. But I would like it if, as-
Yeah, let me interrupt you again if I can. Let me interrupt you if I can. The only way this could come before council would be if you were to create a petition and get a large number of signatures on that petition, and then present that to the city manager, and he will bring that to the council to discuss. You know, free speech is a constitutionally protected item, so it's not something that that we can deal with. However, I think it would be, it would be appropriate for us to respond to a large enough body of citizens who sign a petition asking us to look at that. Mr. Mayor?
Fantastic. Is it, is it possible for me to use the rest of my time to speak to the people in the room then? Because I would absolutely love to put a petition out and have this addressed properly.
Okay, Bob, yes. I'm pausing your timer, so you still have plenty of time, but one of the council members wants to say something.
We do a resolution every year honoring Constitution Week, as well as the Fourth of July with free speech. So we do resolutions every year supporting that, as long as I've been on the council.
All right. Okay. Did you hear that?
I did. I did. Is that, I mean, I understand support in the Constitution, but is there, you're saying that there is a possibility that I could get enough people to sign the thing, and I could re-bring it to you guys, and you could say that this specific bill right now is, like, that you personally don't stand for in our community. That's possible. Right?
Yeah. If you get a petition, and you get a lot, enough people to sign it and bring it to the city manager, then he will bring it to the council.
Fantastic. So I'd like to use my last, I believe I have two minutes.
Yeah, minute 55.
To speak as to, wonderful. I'd like to speak as to why I find this scary personally. Now, we are in Florida. We, we have the constitutional right to free speech, not just, not just free thought, not just free speech, to the extent that even hate speech is protected. It's been, I mean, Supreme Court justices have rules that is protected speech. Now, at that same time, if you go across the border, let's go to Canada, I mean, there, if you said something offensive, like they have, they have thought laws, like Holocaust denial, for an example, is illegal there. And right now, you can actually be sentenced to prison, like, for life. And I find it really scary that's happening so close to us. I understand it's not in our borders, but I always relied on the Constitution, and apparently, we're passing bills that are unconstitutional and specifically target a certain demographic of people, actually, which is what I find the scariest. I mean, right now in Florida, if I pass a flyer out, and I put them on doorsteps, and it said that, I don't know, for an example, Free Palestine, and maybe some, some facts as to what's happening there, that would be considered anti-Semitic. I could go to prison for a hate crime for putting a piece of paper on someone's windshield in Florida that was deemed, I guess, anti-Semitic. However, you have state representatives like Randall Fine, I mean, Randy Fine, he's sitting out there, he posts on Twitter, I mean, awful things. He literally calls for the ethnic cleansing of people openly, and that's protected. But if I said that, my goodness, it's awful what they're doing in Gaza, but if I put on a piece of paper and I put on windshields in a public parking lot-
All right. Ma'am, thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. Did you cut her? Is she going? Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, that is free speech in action. So.
There are two more with their hands raised on the-
Okay, bring them on.
Sir, can you hear me?
Yes. Can you identify yourself, please?
Uh, yes, Travis Rockwell, Maple Street here in Sebastian. Can you hear me?
I'm sorry, you're not, we can't, we can't understand what you're saying. Cut him off.
One more with their hand raised.
All right.
My name is Fred, and I live at 433 Seagrass Avenue. My call is to speak on two issues. One is racist equity programs being used in local ordinances, and the other is the restriction of free speech being done across the nation at the behest of the Anti-Defamation League. These are both-
Sir, sir, that's, that's actually not something that the city council can, can deal with. I would respectfully request that we not get involved in discussions about Anti-Defamation League issues and related to the political environment that exists today in this country. We try to keep it a little bit more civil here and try to concentrate on getting city business done as opposed to, as opposed to that. Are you still there?
I think that was recorded.
Okay, thank you.
Or AI.
Probably was. Yeah, probably was. Okay.
I have another with their hand raised.
We are, we are going to talk about Zoom later, right?
Yeah, well, we'll bring that forward to the next panel.
Go ahead, bring them on.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Rex Yudin. I wanted to ask if you guys are aware that of a practice, if you go to nyc.gov and look up oral suctioning, this is a problem in our town, because rabbis put their mouths on ba-
Sir, sir, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going to entertain that.
Just cut it.
Just cut him off. Just cut him off. Okay, that's it. Uh, public input is closed. Um, I was, I, I, I'd always hoped that local government could operate with all of that, without all of that, but I don't think we're gonna be able to for long. All right, we're on to the consent agenda. I'd like to pull item A, if I may, and would anyone else like to pull an item from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of item, uh, consent, item eight, eight B, C, and D. Second.
Okay, and, uh, we have a motion in a second and, let me make sure there's, I think we need a voice vote on that, please.
Vice Mayor Dixon?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Nun?
Yes.
And Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I asked to pull item A only because I want to provide some information to the, uh, to the people who are looking at this. This is, uh, a request for a grant, uh, to, uh, let me find it again. A grant for the River, to, to, for one point five million dollars to allow us to, uh, continue with our three million dollar, uh, work that we had proposed in two thousand fourteen or fifteen, um, to upgrade Indian River Park. Uh, it includes, um, a really nice upgrade on Indian River Park. It's something that is a great benefit to the city, uh, it's a great benefit to the, um, the way of life and, and so forth within the city. And, uh, I just want to make sure people understand that, uh, this is not something that's new. It's been budgeted, I think, for two years in a row now. It's just that we haven't had enough money to do the whole thing. We have an opportunity to get a million and a half dollar grant to pay half of that cost and that's what this item is. So, uh, I did open it up, so if anyone in the public would like to address it, they may.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Since you pulled that, shall I read the, the resolution?
Oh, yes, please.
Thank you. Resolution number R twenty-four oh five, or, uh, Resolution of City of Sebastian, Indian River County, Florida, ratifying the submittal of a grant application for the land and water conservation program for renovations and upgrades to River U Park, providing for conflicts, scrivener's errors, and an effective date. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, any comments from anyone in the public about this? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of resolution number R dash twenty-four dash zero five.
Second.
All right, we have a approval and, uh, a motion in a second. Any comments from the council? Then we need a voice vote on this also.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Nun?
Yes.
Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Dixon?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, we're on now to item ten A, which is a second reading of a public hearing on ordinance number O twenty-four.
We skipped nine committee reports first, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, committee reports. There wasn't anything written under there, so I skipped it. Are there any committee reports, anyone like?
Uh, yes, I'd like to announce that, um, for everyone that knows that our turtle nesting season starts March first here in Indian River County, so, and the county is definitely still, um, we're still moving forward with the, uh, derelict boat, uh, boat, um, the vessels that was then the Saint Lucy, in the Saint Sebastian River and the Indian River. Uh, there's a little hiccups right now, but it is still moving forward and hopefully those vessels will be moved out soon, so by the end of the year.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, now we're on to ten A, and I'm going to, uh, open the public hearing and ask the attorney to read the ordinance title.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a second and final reading and public hearing of ordinance zero twenty-four oh one, an ordinance of the City of Sebastian, Florida, amending Land Development Code, section fifty-four dash five, twenty-two point two, providing definition of terms regarding murals, amending section fifty-four dash three dash sixteen point three, providing for exemptions pertaining murals, providing for severability, repeal of laws in conflict, providing for codification, scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
All right, does the staff have a presentation?
Good evening, Council. So, um, as stated on the fourteenth, this is, um, the mural, um, code textual amendment, um, to revise the definitions and some different parameters. The program's been in place for about two years, well, since twenty-twenty-two, and, um, in, in looking at the parameters that were currently on the books and what's actually happening, this is, um, a, a housekeeping, if you will, to make it function, um, the way it's actually working. So, um, I have nothing further to add from the fourteenth, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Is there any public input from anyone on this resolution? Seeing none. All right, uh, staff summation, since there was no public input, you probably don't need to do anymore. All right, um, I'm gonna close the hearing and ask the council to deliberate and provide me some.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a recommendation to approve ordinance dash zero, O dash twenty-four dash zero one.
Second.
Good. Brad, did you do that?
Doesn't matter.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any other comments from anyone? All right, let's have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Nun?
Yes.
Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dixon?
Yes.
And Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, now we're on to item number B, which is, uh, also a public hearing, which I'll open at this time and ask the attorney to read the ordinance title.
This is a second, uh, and final reading, reading and adoption hearing for ordinance of the City of Sebastian, Florida, number zero dash twenty-three dash ten, relating to comprehensive plan, amending the comprehensive and government, sorry, governance and implementation elements to incorporate the City of Sebastian's water supply work plan, years twenty-twenty-three to twenty-thirty-five, in accordance with statutory provisions in chapter one sixty-three point three, one-one-seven Florida statutes, authorizing findings and administrative actions, providing for complex severability, scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date and an adoption schedule.
All right, um, staff, if you'd like to make a presentation.
Yes, so this was, um, the first reading was held on September thirteenth of twenty-twenty-three, and, um, it's for the water supply plan, which is in alignment with, um, our comprehensive plan and being in, um, compliance with Department of Economic Opportunities, State of Florida. And so first reading was done in September. It was sent up there for, uh, their review. They came back with no comments, and so this is the second and final reading, uh, to adopt the policies into our comprehensive plan in regards to the water supply system.
All right, is there anyone from the public that would like to say something about this? Okay, I, I know, it's very dry stuff, so I can understand why no one wants to talk about it, so.
But it's water.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, all right, uh, staff, staff has done their summarization. I'm gonna close the hearing and ask the council to deliberate and give me some direction.
I move approval of ordinance O dash twenty-three dash ten.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any comments?
Nope.
All right, let's have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Nun?
Yes.
Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dixon?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, we're now on to a quasi-judicial hearing, which is item ten C. Um, I'm gonna open this hearing and I'll ask the attorney to read the title of the ordinance.
Second and final hearing and quasi-judicial hearing of ordinance number zero twenty-four oh two, an ordinance of the City of Sebastian, Florida, designating a zoning classification of CG commercial general from the current zoning designation of PS public service per land consisting of four point one-three acres, more or less, known as the Old Public Works Compound, located north of Sebastian Boulevard, south and west of Orange Heights subdivision, and west of American Legion Post one-eighty-nine, providing for conflicts, severability, scrivener's errors, and effective date.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, city council members, does anyone have any ex parte communications that they would like to report at this time?
No.
No? You guys are really easy to get along with tonight. Uh, city clerk, uh, would you swear in anyone who intends to provide testimony on this item?
Do you swear or affirm that the factual statements and factual representation which you are about to give or present during this public hearing will be truthful and accurate? Yeah, thank you.
Okay, now staff presentation, please.
So this is the second and final, um, reading for, um, the Old Public Works Compound, like we talked about on the fourteenth. It's four point one-three acres and, um, we are looking at rezoning it from, um.
Public service.
Public service to a general commercial, and, um, nothing has changed since the fourteenth.
Okay, good. Council, do you have any questions? Uh, the applicant is not here, but do you have any questions of the staff on this?
We, we are the applicant.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, no? No, anyone? All right. Now I'm gonna open this to the floor for anyone who is opposed to, to this request. Seeing none, I'm gonna open it to anyone who is in favor of this request. Seeing none. Okay, staff, you don't need, you've done your summarization, correct?
Correct.
Okay. City council, deliberate, and, uh, if you have no deliberations, I'll call for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to approve the ordinance dash O dash twenty-four dash zero two.
Second.
Have a second, okay. You get the second. Kelly Dixon, okay.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any comments from anyone on the council? Then let's have a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dixon?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
And Councilmember Nun?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, anybody out there, you might wonder why we're going through this stuff so fast, but this is probably the fourth time we've seen most of this.
Yes.
Certainly the second time we voted on it, so. We're on to item number D, under the category, under the category, number ten, ten D, with the, uh, and this is also a quasi-judicial hearing, so I'm gonna open the hearing and ask the attorney to read the title.
Ordinance num- sorry, second and final reading of public, sorry, ordinance number zero twenty-four oh three, an ordinance of the City of Sebastian, Florida, designating zoning classification of HI heavy industrial from the current zoning designation of IN industrial, per land consisting of five point one-three acres, more or less, known as Warrior Recycling, located north of the City of Sebastian Airport, south and west of Krail Warehouse, east of residential development, providing for conflicts, severability, scrivener's errors, and effective date. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Um, council, do you want to have any ex parte communications that you'd like to report?
Nope.
None.
No, none, okay. Advocate, let me see, the city clerk has to swear in those who intend to provide testimony.
Becca, do you swear or affirm that the factual statements and the factual representation which you're about to give or present during this public hearing will be truthful and accurate?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, would the applicant like to make a presentation on this? No? Okay. Um, and I, I'll, I'll, I'll say this for them, they, they've made that presentation to us probably more times than we can count, so we've seen a lot of it, so. This has been going on for a long time and it's, uh, it's really good that it might be coming to an end tonight, so. Um, all right, staff presentation, please.
So this is the second, uh, reading, uh, the first one was on February fourteenth and they are requesting a rezoning, um, to heavy industrial. It is in alignment with their comprehensive plan and the applicant is here to answer any questions you may have, as well as staff.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna open this up to the, on the floor for anyone who is in favor of this request. Seeing none, anyone opposed? All right, once again, seeing none. Um, there were no public inputs, so, uh, even though the applicant and the staff have an opportunity to, uh, to summarize that, there's nothing to come after on that, so, okay. Uh, city council deliberations are now open, uh, and I'll call for a motion if the council's ready to do that.
Mr. Mayor, move approval of ordinance number O dash twenty-four dash zero three. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any comments from anyone in the council? And let's have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Dixon?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Nun?
Yes.
And Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay. We're on now to ten echo. And I believe that's quasi-judicial, but let me make sure.
Alex has background now.
No, ten echo is not quasi-judicial, so.
Huh?
All right. Yes.
So this is quasi.
It is, it is quasi?
Yes.
Okay, then I'm, I'm gonna open the hearing, um, first I'm gonna ask the, uh, the clerk to read the, uh, read the, the resolution.
The attorney, I'll do it.
Attorney, I'm sorry.
I'll do it. Thank you, Mayor. This is a quasi-judicial hearing for resolution number R dash twenty-four oh three, Resolution of City of Sebastian, Indian River County, Florida, approving a special use permit pursuant to Land Development Code, section fifty-four dash two point, dash three point one, for small RV park located at six oh eight Davis Street within the Riverfront Overlay District, CWR Commercial Warehouse Residential Zoning District, providing for severability, conflicts, scrivener's errors, and effective date, and also for an expiration date. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Okay, uh, I think for the last time tonight, I'm gonna ask, is anyone's had any ex parte communications?
No.
Nope, no? Okay. And then the clerk will swear in anyone who intends to provide testimony.
Do you, do you swear or affirm that the factual statements and the factual representation which you're about to give or present during this public hearing will be truthful and accurate?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, would the, uh, I think it's, Cindy Allison, is, you gonna make a presentation? You can all come up.
Good evening, my name is Alicia Shaughnessy. Um, I work for BGE as the engineer for this project, and I have here, um, the owners and the client, Cindy Allison Stoica and Craig Stoica.
You have some help coming.
Okay, thank you. All right, thanks. So this is the project location, we're, um, on Davis Street in between Indian River Drive and North Central Avenue. Um, let's see. The surrounding properties, across the street, we have a hotel with about fourteen rooms. Um, across the other street, we have Masonic Temple Lodge, we have an RV repair shop, um, the community center, we have the Marina Lodging and Restaurant, and Squid Lips down more to the south, so we're in a very heavy commercial district. This is our proposed plan, it's very conceptual, um, so the zoning in our area is, is commercial waterfront residential. Permitted uses include residential, timeshare, clubs, um, and other commercial uses. Conditional uses include hotels and motels, bed and breakfast, boat storage. If we were doing residential, the allowed density is eight units per acre, so for this site, it'd be about twenty-five units. So the proposed use that we're proposing is a special use that is not currently allowed anywhere in the City of Sebastian. Um, so we, again, this is very conceptual, just so you could see, um, the idea that the client has, and it's a, an RV park, um, it's not like the typical RV park that you think of, which is back-to-back, um, all concrete or asphalt. This is more of kind of a luxury campground. Um, and so we have shown on here eight RV sites as well as five cottages, um, and then also the owner's home is on the property as well. Um, we, because it's so conceptual, we, we just kind of plop down the, the approximate sizes of the RV lots, so they're about sixty-five, um, feet long, and the cottages are about twelve hundred square feet, which we realize is actually quite large. Um, but again, it was very conceptual, we just put it on there. Um, and so this, this is how you guys have been given the, um, the plans. This is a profile view, just so you can kind of see, um, they are planning to try to keep as many of the trees on the property. Um, and again, they're trying to do, to give the RVers a lot of space and greenery around them so that they're not just back-to-back with, with people on top of each other. This is their current buffering around their, their property. Um, it is very, very dense. If you drive by, you cannot see inside the property. They do have an existing ditch that they also wanna preserve as an amenity. These are some example of RV pads, just so you could see how spread out they are and with all the greenery, that's what they picture. They do wanna provide full hookups, which means they have electric, they have water, and they have a cleanout for dumping, so no generators are necessary, and then again, the full tree coverage. So just a more kind of their business plan, they wanna do short-term rentals. So on here, we are requesting three months, so ninety days for the RVs, and during the planning and zoning, we discussed the cottages may have to be thirty days, but the client is requesting ninety days for the RVs. So the audience are upscale RVers that wanna quieter places to stay, so hopefully with them kind of longer terms stay, you have people that wanna put down a little bit of roots and want a nice, clean environment where, where they'll be for a while. We're also showing an amenities center on site, which includes an outdoor cooking area, dining space, showers, and laundry. The cottages are available for rent. The owners will stay on the property to provide twenty-four seven service and to ensure a clean environment, so the overall goal is to create an oasis by preserving and planting landscape and preserving the ditch. So the request is to allow for this special use, and then the planning and zoning has also included a couple more conditions along with staff's request, and so we, we agree with most of their conditions except for the thirty-day maximum stay for the RVers, which I did look up in the Florida statutes and it's a little bit different, the definitions for RV camps, and that's something we can look more into, but we are also hoping to have a little bit more flexibility on the unit count. Again, we just put a very conceptual plan down and put squares on there, and we like the idea of thirteen units, but we don't wanna be held to the five cottages and eight RV pads, so we just want you guys to take that into consideration.
It, when you say that you want a total of thirteen, but you might want more cottages and less RV pads?
Or more RV pads and less cottages.
Really, it's just to have the best use of the land, essentially, because we don't necessarily know how it's gonna be routed around, so we don't wanna get held to this eight and five. Really, a thirteen.
Okay.
Yep, and so we're here for questions.
Okay. Staff, would you like to make a presentation?
Thank you, council. As Elise explained, this is for a special use permit, we're just considering the use. With some, some of the approvals that are shown in the conceptual plan, the code does not have any regulations regarding the RV part of this proposal, and as such, this is being brought before you as a special use application. If the special use is approved, and depending on what your conditions are, the next step is for them to bring in a full site plan where we will get more traffic information, buffering, landscaping, things like that. So this, what you have before you in your packet is the exact same information that went before Planning and Zoning Commission, and as you can see on page one oh eight, and, one oh seven and one oh eight, there was the conditions, there was originally six conditions that staff recommended, and from the planning and zoning, a public hearing that they had, they came up with a few more, another six conditions of approval that are listed in red on one hundred and eight. What we came, when this, when this permit came in with us, into us, we did examine our codes and regulations for vacation rentals. We are looking at the cottages as a type of vacation rental, and the, very specifically in the Florida statutes, we have the exact same definition in our code regarding short-term rentals for less than thirty days, and so our original condition of approval referred to that thirty days. Our feeling was is that once we got over that thirty days with regards to the Florida statute and their requirement, that we may be listing, looking into more of a density issue. At some point, these would be more long-term rentals, and if we have to look into density, that's tied to the eight units per acre versus vacation rentals where there's no density and it's more of a transient nature business such as a hotel. So our original request, recommendation of condition approval was for no more than thirty days. If there are considerations for that RV to have more, a longer stay, we may need some advice or guidance from the city attorney if there are different statutes covering RVs versus the cottages, and the cottages definitely are a type of different transient unit versus an RV. I'd like to, staff feels that this is, we have looked at this, we certainly in a site plan type of, when that comes in, we will look at more of the traffic with regards to these large vehicles using Old Dixie Highway and some of those intersections, but at this time is consideration for the conceptual plan. I think what they had just mentioned about the thirteen units, one of our conditions is, is that if they had changed that number, that it would need to go back before planning and zoning, because they had not been, their recommendation may be different if they were looking for a higher number, but if it's a, if it's a matter of changing the amount of RVs versus cottages, but those units stay at thirteen, I think staff would be amenable to that and recommend approval for that with that thirteen type of rental unit. I'd like to just quickly go over what those conditions are, so part of the conversation from the, from the Planning and Zoning Commission on where they came from. We recommend approval of the special use with the conditions listed in resolution twenty-four oh three, which are, and I apologize.
On page one oh two of the agenda packet.
Yes. And then we talked about the, the amount of units. Any proposed increase to the amount would require additional approval by City Council and also by Planning and Zoning. We would start over if they changed the number of units to thirteen. We are still requesting that the maximum length of stay shall be limited to thirty days onsite, and we added the word onsite from the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting so that there wasn't a thirty day at one RV pad and then you relocate to another thirty days at another RV pad, and you just moved to different RV pads, so we did add onsite. We talk about the traffic analysis that would be required with the site plan. Part of the, what nice is about this proposal is that a lot of the trees are proposed to remain and that nice cover saving that hammock, so we are gonna request, we would like to request a full tree survey as required with the middle of the site plan, that there's a construction tree preservation plan with that, and then a long-term tree maintenance plan that would come in with the site plan. Of course, the RV park would have to be in compliance with all health department requirements, state of Florida requirements. No, this, and then also that no RV pads or cottages be constructed on the east side of Indian River Drive, and per the conceptual plan, it was verified at Planning and Zoning, they are only proposing an amenity dock, possibly some boat slips. They would have to get that permitted through the state also. From the Planning and Zoning meeting, there was the residential neighbor to the, to the north, she did appear, she had some concerns regarding noises, pet noises, campfires, generators, and so we have requested through the Planning and Zoning, they recommended that rules of operation for the RV park be established by the owner and submitted to staff with their site plan. There was some discussion on tent camping, and Planning and Zoning recommended that tent camping not be prohibited, but there was some discussion that possibly an RV family may allow the children to sleep in tents close by, so we'd like to revise that as what's in your packet to say standalone tent camping is permitted, is prohibited. So just an RV pad with just a tent on it would be prohibited, but certainly not tents in the RV park itself. Planning and Zoning had some minimum parking spaces that they would like to see for each RV pad, one space, two parts, spaces for the cottages, and eight spaces for the amenities center. To help with some of the generator noise, they are requiring a full utility hookup for each RV pad, which the owners and the applicant has stated they're gonna do, and they had talked about the size of the cottages. I think because the conceptual plan notes them as one thousand two hundred and fifty square feet, they would like to not see that be increased from that amount and make them, more of the cottages than full, single-family residents that are for rent. Staff recommends approval of this special use.
Okay, council, are there any questions for the applicant or the staff?
Mr. Mayor, I have a few questions. I've noticed, and I don't, this may be for staff or maybe the property owners, I've noticed that everywhere it says full hookup, is this property on sewer?
Um, I think the new sewer line came.
I'm saying yes. So all of the, all of the sewer connections would actually be to sewer, not the septic, okay?
Yes.
That's important.
Believe the new sewer line that the county just put in runs up North Central Avenue to Jackson Street, so it's.
Okay, good, that, I think that's a super important one from, obviously you seem environmentally conscious, so that's, that's probably preferred anyways. Reading, and I noticed you just talked about the tent camping, so what you're proposing on that, just to reconfirm what I understood, is you don't want standalone tents on camp sites, but having a tent on a site with a motor home is okay? Or a camper?
Yes, there was consideration that there possibly would be a scenario of family, RV, you have the kids in the tent, they wanna.
Hyped on it, yeah, understood.
And so, but it would be in combination.
I noticed in the Planning and Zoning questions, somebody asked what type of campers it would be, and someone asked about a trailer, and it said they would be motorized. Will this be limited to only motor homes, or will, will pole trailers be allowed as well?
Can you, can you get in front of the mic?
I think travel trailers and RVs would be.
Okay.
Available.
Is this, is this Class A that you're talking about?
We're not, we don't have it specifically limited, but the idea is this higher class. I mean, I think the price range will price people out of it, but also the, I guess the environment too, of what we're going for is luxury, so.
Makes sense. So you're not, you're not, in your desire, not wanting to limit the vehicles that are the campers that can come there, you're just wanting nice.
Yeah.
Campers.
Correct.
Okay, whether it be a motorized or a pole trailer.
That's.
Okay, I, I think that was all my questions for now.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, I think they brought up earlier something about how many homes can go in there, and I'd like the attorney to talk a little bit about the statute for transient that, that changes that number that staff spoke about.
I'm sorry, can you clarify a little bit what your question is, 'cause are we talking about the number of nights?
The number of units.
The number of units?
The number of units. That triggers a different statute.
I think we talked about the statute and the thirty days, thirty days or more, is it the transient definition essentially?
Correct, yes.
I don't think it necessarily relates to the number of units on the property. That has to do, if you, well, maybe a little. So with respect to what Dory mentioned earlier, if it's, if it's non-transient, then the zoning restrictions will kick in.
Then there's density based on your land use. But if it's, but without, without, if it still remains a transient type of use, and I'm gonna go back to hotel motel, there are no density issues. They could have, if they can fit all their parking and stormwater and meet the height, they could have a fifty, a three-story hotel with fifty rooms in it. It's not, it's not limited to density if you're, if you're transient type of use. Once you go to more of a use where you're there for long term, it can pull into density issues, where we're looking at more of a multifamily type of use, and then you have to rely on your land use and your zoning at eight units per acre.
Right, so, so that would trigger anything after thirty days, what you're talking about.
The Florida statute refers to transient.
Correct. The definition in statute five eighty-nine oh one-three that we talked about a little bit, has the definitions for transient occupancy and non-transient, and where that comes into play is potentially discussions on whether the city can regulate short-term rentals, and you don't wanna get in any minimum night standards and things of that nature. Where we worry about is maximum, and those are, someone allowed when you go into these things because it's provided for in this section of the statutes, if that makes sense. Does that help?
Oh yeah, that's good. Thank you.
So do you think there's a difference between the ninety days with the RVs versus cottages?
I think, well, we try to avoid short-term rental, you know, preemption issues.
Right.
The only time I'm comfortable with it is if there's something in the statute provided, and in this instance, we can rely on that thirty days.
Right.
If you go beyond the thirty days, then you're potentially going into non-transient occupancy.
Okay.
And it was mentioned that this was short-term rental, is what is intended for the property. So there's just that potential legally. I would stay away from minimum night standards, maximums don't bother me as much.
Okay. When you're done, I have a few questions.
Yeah.
So a lot of times, I've noticed in addition to, like people who have RVs, they usually have extra toys to go with them. So do you have any spots that you were thinking of for maybe like kayaks, 'cause you know, everyone loves our river, so they're gonna come either hauling a boat or kayaks. What do you intend to do about that?
Yeah, I think that's a good point. In the conceptual plan, there was nothing there.
Okay.
The idea is to have obviously a dock with amenities that could have boat slips or potential for people to put their kayaks in, so I think that needs to be addressed.
Sure.
And considered to have those extra spots. Right now, I think we have in the planning, like one parking space, and, and the RV lots itself are pretty oversized. I mean, they're meant for very large.
Good.
So I think there's plenty of space there, plus there's gonna be like, like a nice outdoor area for them, for each individual space where there can be stuff too, but I think we can consider. I think there's, we're only trying to put thirteen spaces on there, there's plenty of land there and space to add these pieces.
Okay. Already touched on sewer and thirty or ninety days, so, and I think, yeah, I think I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, have you applied for a submergent land lease for the property?
Emerg, not yet, but we were told to do that, so we, yeah. I'm not sure why it's.
Well, right now, it'll probably take you two years to put a dock out there, so.
Right, oh yeah.
A minimum of two years to put a dock out there. Okay, on, on one of your, on your first picture that you put up when you put your slides up, there was a, there was a triangle along North Central Avenue that was not included in the first slide, but is included in the other slides. Is there, is that a scrivener's error or is that something?
It's an error, and the triangle is part of the piece of land.
It's part of the piece of land?
It's two different.
Okay.
It's, it was two different parcels.
Two different parcels.
And, and these parcels are independent right now, is there a process to join them?
Yeah, we talked about that as well.
We talked about that.
Yep.
Okay, so you've talked about doing that?
Yes.
Okay. I know there's, there's legislation right now in Tallahassee that looks like it's gonna pass, that's gonna change the vacation rental stuff, and so I don't know what the thirty-day thing is gonna be when it's finished, but.
Just never know. Just never know, do you?
You never know what they're, what they're gonna do, but I'm still, I'm still have questions about the two issues related to the, the number, the number of units, the difference between having thirteen or eight RV pads and five cottages, or having ten RV pads and six cottages. I don't, I'm still kinda fuzzy on what the impact is if we wait until site plan time to make that determination.
Uh, no, we were just saying that, I think.
Total unit.
I think that they didn't wanna change what's going before you right now is the total for thirteen. It's just they have eight RVs and five cottages. If they keep those units at thirteen, maybe they come back with eight cottages and seven RV pads. We wanted, we were okay with this, with that, without having it come back for you.
Okay.
If they, once, once this, once they do some engineering and get in there and realize that they can put twenty units in there, if they came back now and said, hey, we'd like to put fifteen RV pads in there and five cottages, that would require to come back before Planning and Zoning, if the number of units.
That's the confusing factor. If we change your, your number one to something other than that, that's, that's approved, is it not?
Yes, you, I mean, I'm not sure with advice and guidance from the city attorney, if because it wasn't what Planning and Zoning had reviewed and their recommendation may have changed, if it has to go back before them, but if she feels that you can change that number of units in one, before it would have to come back before you.
But you see, Planning and Zoning didn't approve standalone tents either, so does it have to go back because if we change that?
Uh, they had, they had to tent camping.
Yeah, so I, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm just talking about.
Yes. How many changes can you do before?
The control issue, and, and, you know.
Mayor, if I might, I'm sorry.
Yes.
It, it's a conditional use or a special exception before you, so their recommendation is just that, a recommendation.
Right.
So it was advertised and it's properly before you, and you can make that determination tonight.
That's what I wanted to get to, that we can make that determination without it going back to P and Z. Okay, and I would like to get just a little bit more information from you guys as to, as to how we can word this, because right now, the way it's worded, it says eight RV pads and five cottages. It doesn't say thirteen units, it says eight RV pads and five cottages, so we, we need to modify that some way so that we give them some flexibility at site plan time. If they're amenable to thirteen. If they're amenable to thirteen total pot, plots, then we should say thirteen plots, okay? And then they can come back and say, I mean, an RV parking, a Class A RV that is forty-four feet long and has a trailer behind it that is sixty-two feet.
Correct.
Um, I, I haven't measured your pads, but that's a big pad. And if you don't have pull-through pads, those guys can't park there.
Correct.
It's very difficult for them to pull in and back into that place, especially with the circular drive you've got in there.
And that's why we wanted to keep it thirteen, cause we don't necessarily, haven't gotten in there to do the nitty-gritty details.
I mean, if you really want the luxury RV, you're gonna have to have pull-through pads.
For sure.
Yeah, cause my, my, my friend drives one of those and he won't stay in a cap, a, a, a park that does not have pull-through places, you know, so... So, uh, whatever wording we need to do on that, we need to do something to limit that to thirteen, which is fine.
If you want to state something that the, the maximum amount of transient units for rent can be, and then just establish a number, um, that can be a mix then of RV pads or cottages.
Do we have to say the word transient? I hate that word.
I know.
We don't want transient housing in Sebastian. We want, we want housing that is rented through organizations like Airbnb that brings people here to go to our restaurants and go to our shops, but not transient.
I was using that to, so that would cover the thirty days and it could be any type of unit. That is non-transient, where we had to get to density.
But you know, this, this is another issue. We have a lot of people who come to Sebastian and don't come here for two weeks or three weeks. They come here like, uh, I've got friends that are planning on, coming here January, February of next year. They would rent one of these cottages in a minute if they were ready.
That's...
That's why I did one of the ninety days.
So they wanna be here for two weeks, you know, for two months, and so...
Right, so you have the option of just saying for thirteen units?
Okay.
As opposed to making it finite for the eight and five.
Okay. And then, and then the, the, the thirty days, that's a legal discussion that probably needs to be had some way or another during your site plan process. Uh, because I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure what's gonna happen between now and three weeks from now in Tallahassee, but they may throw a lot of, a lot of, uh...
And there's a Florida statute on just RVs and, like, more transient, which defines it as six months, I believe, six months and one day.
So that's, yeah, again, it's, but it's all tech...
You have to read through it, but the, the Florida state statute that they're referring to gives a list of definitions for transient and non-transient, and then what falls under those. Um, and under the exceptions, there is a line that says, um, any type of unit that is being inspected by the Department of Health is not included in this definition. And so there's a whole nother section, um, for RVs. And the only thing that's stated in there is a maximum of six months.
Is there...
But we still have cottages here too, this isn't all RVs.
Right, so we're...
No, but couldn't we...
The client is open to doing thirty days maximum for the cottages, but more...
Ninety days for the RVs.
And, and you're saying the RV is more than thirty, but the cottages are thirty?
No, I'm not agreeing to that, she's not giving me that to review. Um, I would have to review that before I agree to that. Um, but what I'm saying is that, in my opinion, the thirty days definition is applicable, particularly with respect to the cottages.
Mm-hmm, sure. I was just thinking with the ninety days for the RVs and motor homes, it would just be less wear and tear on our roads if it applied to, like, if it didn't mess up with anything else. That's just one pro to that, being an exception for those elements.
What's the state statute that you would use to do that?
Uh, five eighty-nine zero one-three. Sorry, no. I'm looking at five, I'm looking at five eighty-nine oh one-three.
That's it?
There's, there's three of them, I can provide them to you.
So why don't we, why don't we change number two instead of saying thirty days, that this, that the state limitations, uh, would be consistent with Florida statute five eighty-nine zero one-three, and then that's a matter of legal representation. Leo, is that acceptable to you?
Well, there's three of them, there's five eight, five oh nine oh three-two.
Okay.
Um, five oh nine two four two-two, there's, there's many statutes that apply, obviously. There's a whole lot of statutes. I also wanted to mention based on that topic, we have one of the conditions that they would implement park rules and regulations, and that's actually already provided for by law in five-one-three point one-one-seven. So you don't need to make that a condition.
It's already, yeah.
Okay. So I, uh, I would like, I'd like to recommend to the council that, that item number two, instead of saying right now at this point, cause we don't have a site plan, we don't have a finalization on this, thirty days, because I, you know, I, I think that's, if it doesn't have to be limiting, it could be limiting. Cause a lot of people are gonna wanna come here for a month and a half or two months. This is the type of RV park that I'd love to see us build other places, or specifically in Sebastian, cause there's not, it's not a field full of trailers.
Correct.
Uh, you know, it, it, it's a, it appears to be something that they're gonna take care of. It's gonna be lots of vegetation, a lot of stuff around it, so... But if it limits them to thirty days, if, for, if the statutes don't require that, which we can do through investigation, then that can be done at site plan time, can it not? Uh, city attorney?
It can, and it, it's your pleasure. I mean, whether you decide thirty or ninety, I mean, it's just a matter of interpretation.
That, well, that's right, and I'm, I'm, I'm wanting to make sure that the interpretation, we have, have adequate time to do that correctly. It's, it's the issue with that.
These conditions are, are what you would be approving for the use. The site plan will then pull in a lot of the land development codes, and the site plan, because this isn't any type of special district or PUD, the site plan final approval quasi-judicial is at Planning and Zoning Commission. So the site plan itself isn't gonna be coming back to the board.
I know that, yeah.
And this is the resolution for the use and setting up those...
But the, the site plan has to be approved based on these conditions?
The ones that would be applicable to site design.
And so, this, when the site plan comes back, if this stays at thirty days, then it's gonna be thirty days. There's nothing in the site plan process that would change that, is there?
Correct.
Okay. So if we don't, if we don't make some statement today that allows some flexibility between now and then in making sure we've got the proper interpretation of the statutes, then they can't do more than thirty days, even if, even if they review that. Cause we're not saying, based on statutes, we're saying thirty days.
Just at the end of the day, it's your decision because it's a conditional use.
Right.
So whether you go thirty or ninety is ultimately up to you.
Well, I don't wanna say ninety if there's thirty's a problem. I just wanna, I, I'm not satisfied personally, and I don't know about the rest of the council, but I'm not personally satisfied that we've done an adequate evaluation yet of the statutes. I'm hearing different things that, that, that limit that.
I'm at thirty.
A question.
I'm sorry?
I'm at thirty, that's my opinion. But you can, you know, it's your decision as policymakers if you wanna go over.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. Um, the cottages, are they required to be inspected by Florida, or the Florida's as hotel-related type properties, or no?
I don't know the technicality of that. I'm not sure, I'm, I'm sure they are, but...
And I, I ask the question because if it's, if they're inspected or required to be inspected by hotels, then the cottage themselves would be treated like a hotel. And then with hotels, I don't believe there's any limit to the number of days a hotel can be used if treated as a hotel.
Well, not in our jurisdiction, for sure.
Well, not in our jurisdiction, correct. Um, I, I personally don't see any benefit to us limiting the amount of time an RV can go stay in this park. I, if the people wanna stay there, so, once again, we're not talking about five hundred lots on a, on a half-mile piece of property. We're talking about a, a, a very shaded wooded, uh, high-class RV park. And if someone wants to stay there for three months, I don't see a problem with that. I, I personally would like this to, I like the idea of, of, uh, Mayor Dodd said, which is limiting it by the state statutes that require us to limit it and not limiting it any further than that. Um, that would be my recommendation, and I agree with him on that. I, I would say, I don't, I don't think, I don't see any, any benefit to us limiting and letting them, limiting the amount of time that someone can stay there. It's, it's their business, if they wanna run it with longer-term clients, I see my opinion to let them do that. But that's just my opinion.
And we live there, so we don't want any, uh, rip-roff clients either.
Can we clarify, point of clarification with the applicant? Wasn't it, was it your suggestion to put the ninety days? Where did the ninety days come from?
We wanted the ninety days originally, yes.
So if they're voluntarily agreeing to a ninety-day limit, then you could make that a condition?
That would, I would, I would accept the ninety day.
Was the ninety days in, in response to a thirty-day suggestion? Or was the ninety days because that was the number you were looking at?
That was their original proposal.
That was the original number.
Okay. And, and if ninety days is what you're proposing, I like that. I mean, that gives us a definitive number as long as it's legal by statute, like you said, for RV parks. Uh, also, the size of the, um, cabins, I mean, I, I just did an idea just to see how big a thirty-two-foot camper is, uh, which is a little bigger than what I have, and that's only three hundred, roughly three hundred square foot. So a twelve-hundred square foot, uh, cabin is, that's huge. And I, I hope we're not, yeah, I was gonna say, I hope we're not making that a minimum.
Our house is nine hundred square feet, so we do not intend to, uh...
Okay, so that number, was that a minimum or a maximum number?
It shall not exceed.
It was a maximum, okay, thank you. I didn't, couldn't go back and find it when I was looking to answer that question. Okay, that's all I have.
Does anyone else have anything?
No, I guess, no. This one's a little different than the last RV park that came before, counsel. You are on planning and zoning.
Yeah, I remember that one.
And I don't have a problem with more than ninety days or anything. My concern is the type of vehicle that's, that's possibly gonna be coming in. Whereas before it was a Class A, and we all know Class A, uh, RVs start at three, four hundred thousand dollars. But now if you're talking in trail, trailers being towed in, I mean, I would like to see if, if we're gonna go that route, that there's an age limit. You don't have ones that are twenty, twenty-five years old. Because again, you know, they have the other park that's, uh, south of Sportsman's Lodge, and, and that's a nice one. I know they can stay over ninety days. But there's another park, I'm not gonna mention, that's a lot less. And, and I know you, you look very good people, you want the best camp. But when this, if it's sold or passed on to somebody else, what are the requirements gonna be? Just, it can be nine RVs in there, it doesn't matter what, you know, if it's Sanford and Son coming in with the RV, they can stay for ninety days, that's my concern.
I, I, I think Class A, you know, it sounds to me, just reading your application, that you're looking for, you're looking to build a facility that, that is, that is gonna bring in Class A RVs. What, now, there are some fifth-wheelers that are definitely Class A RVs. Bumper towed, it's, it's hard to get to a Class A classification with a bumper-towed RV, but you can definitely do it with a fifth-wheeler. So, uh, you know, it's possible to do that.
And that's why we wanna be careful limiting ourselves too much on these restrictions, but we could add this into the rules, um...
But if, if the ninety day, Bob, I think the ninety days will limit that because it won't, they won't, you won't be able to pull your RV in there and leave it for two years. Right? And that's, that's what happens is, I, I, some of these RV parks turn into short-term rental parks. But a guy parks it, pulls his RV in, and now he starts renting it, and the next thing you know, you have a school bus stopping at your RV park. Cause there's kids in there now. And we certainly don't want that, you know, to happen, so... Uh, I, I read a thing about, on the West Coast, one of the counties over there was having a fit because they had so many students coming out of these recreational vehicle parks, because they were being, it was being used for, as a affordable workforce housing to rent them, to rent RVs, so, um, so...
Mr. Mayor, this is, um, you know, environmentally, this is a real good fit.
Yes.
And because there, there's the alternative that someone can build a big hotel over there too. But environmentally, the amount of trees that they're saving and how it's going to be set up, it's, um, environmentally, it's very good for our city to have this, so...
Okay.
Can we add Class A to this?
No, I don't think we should.
Okay, just curious.
I, I personally believe we should be careful not to limit the business plan of the property owners, just my thought, I mean...
I know nothing about this.
Listen, there's many RV places I go to that will not let RVs over twenty years old or fifteen years old. And I've had to send pictures of my RV to places to make sure they accepted it before I could even rent the place. So, I mean, there are a business plan model that you can handle. I, I believe they can handle that side.
Good, good.
And the ninety days does limit that whole, uh, someone living there for two years.
Good, yeah.
Okay, we're, we need to bundle this all down into one, so...
Yes, we do, yeah, so we have to adjust number eight and number one and two, right?
Well, we got, number one would be changed to thirteen units.
Correct.
And the reference to eight RV pads and five cottages would be removed. Number two would be changed to ninety days, um...
On site.
Per state statute?
Ninety, ninety days per state statute. So that gives us an opportunity to, uh, work with the applicant on determining whether we have to shift that from ninety days to a lower amount based on state statute. Number eight would be standalone tent camping, so the word standalone would be, would be put in front of tent to do that. Number eleven would be removed.
Uh, actually, Mr. Mayor...
Now, we have to adjust eight to say, like, with...
Mr. Mayor, if I may, on number eight?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Standalone tent camping is prohibited.
Yeah.
So eliminate or the use of tents as sleeping quarters.
Okay, that's fine.
So standalone tent camping is prohibited.
Exactly.
Yeah, we just don't wanna limit the, um, if parents come with their kids and they wanna sit them outside in a, in a tent to lay around. I don't wanna have to limit that, so...
It's like a vacation if you put them in a tent.
And then we're gonna remove item number eleven and re-number twelve to eleven.
I, I didn't, um, for number eleven, we were removing that, the, the, um, that came from the planning and zoning discussion from the neighbor that came from the north. She did have concerns about pets, uh, noise, generator noise. And so that was kind of included in this ruled operations. And they had discussed that they maybe have a limit where all pets would have to be inside at ten o'clock, or generators couldn't be run from two AM to six AM if it was necessary. Uh, so that was, that was kind of, the rules of operation were not necessarily tied to just the size or type of trailer. It was some other rules or regulations that, uh...
But the, the attorney said state statute five thirteen one-one-seven requires that they do that.
Or was that number five?
No.
No, number eleven.
Okay.
Number eleven. So they have to do that anyway.
Yeah, number eleven is actually, I was reading that during the meeting, and it actually says that they have to adopt that, and they, they know about it. And I think it's best to let them get into the weeds on that rather than us, yeah.
So remove, remove number eleven?
The state statute may actually have some stuff in it to tell them what they have in it, so... But I, I, I don't think there's a need for anyone to run a generator for being given power.
Exactly.
And that, one of the things they put in their, in their order is to do no generators. You know, why would you wanna run a generator if you're gonna have a hookup, so... So is anyone else thinking of anything other than that? Did you guys get that? Did you get the notes on that, so you can provide that to the attorney? Are we okay with that?
Yes.
We good?
And counsel, just, just so clear too, there was, we did have, there was, um, similar to some of our other new special uses, the, there is an expiration date, um, on section seven, that we had, um, that the special use permit will expire three years from the date of the effective date if the RV resort is not operational by that time.
Okay.
I did wanna point that out, that there is an expiration date regarding this resolution.
Yes.
Can we have the applicant state on the record, um, as to their concurrence as to those conditions before we go forward on the motion?
Okay. Do you agree to those conditions?
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
Do you have, is there any objections or?
No, with the ones we changed, we're good.
Yeah, what we changed, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, then, uh, counsel, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Public input?
Oh, public input. Does anyone in the public like to address this item? Yes, sir?
Mr. Mayor, is that, uh, five minutes, her five minutes, and then I get mine?
I'll, I'll be kind, I'll be kind to you.
My name is Harry Marshall, my lovely wife's Sarah, we live at eight twenty-five Bailey Drive.
We're concerned, we're a part of the seven oh seven J LLC.
We own a property on Jackson Street.
Let, let, let your wife talk first, okay? It, it's better that way. It, it's better for your marriage that way, too.
Okay, um, the community development department was most helpful, and I wanna thank them. I'm concerned about saving the lagoon. I recommend that a full evaluation of the water and sewer be done by the River, um, Indian River County Utilities and the Health Department prior to any approval for a special use, uh, permit. Recreation vehicles, as was addressed by some of the council members. Recreation vehicles and amenity center potentially need additional equipment, such as the dump and the hookups. I'd like that in place, I'd like that evaluated, so that it could be whatever number you're deciding on for the RV unit. And I want to ensure that the county sewer is in place and used, and I thank you.
Okay, and, sir?
I only get three minutes. Um, reason, uh, I looked at the plan and I looked at everything. I, we live on, uh, we have a business and own property on Jackson Street. Uh, some of you have brought this up, and most of you have taken some of my thunder away. Uh, Jackson Street, North Central Avenue, Indian River Drive, they are not built for these behemoths that drive down here. I, I see them come out of the repair shop going up Central Avenue and then try, trying to make... I, I see them come out of the repair shop going up Central Avenue and then try, trying to make the left turn up to Jackson Street. Uh, my objection is to the, uh, motor pads. I have no objection to any standalone building that they have there. I wish you would really think about that. Uh, I think you're gonna have, uh, accidents, you might have some injuries, all because you're bringing in these huge things and, uh, it's, it's not necessary. It's not designed, the, the, the structure's not there. Okay? Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, best.
Now, I, I will, does the staff, would the staff like to respond to any of the points that they brought forward?
So, one, we made that a condition of approval, but even if it wasn't a condition, it definitely is an item for our site plan review. Um, we are specifically, not just the entrances, um, the driveways, uh, to go into the property, but also we'll have them look at the condition of North Central, Jackson Street, and, uh, there was another street there that would be mentioned, that we would like them to look at the condition. Um, there may be, this is just, again, just the use, there may be a lot of off-site improvements that they may have to do. It may be additional signage, it may be road improvement, turn lanes, uh, whatever, once we get the traffic analysis and, uh, some surveys and, and information with the site plan, we definitely will be, that will be looked at and addressed.
Right. And, and as far as the county utilities concerned, uh, they're, they're gonna protect their, their investment, so that, they're gonna, they're gonna have an awful lot of input into the, to the sewer hookup setups, the water hookup setups, backflows, all the things that are there to protect their investment in that. And, uh, so I, I, I think that you'll be satisfied, you should be satisfied with that when you see it, that it's taking place. Um, a, a, a lot of these big RVs come into that repair shop that's there on North Central right now, so. And, and, you know, they must be able to get in there some way. But I do know that the city has in here, uh, any, uh, traffic evaluation, and there may be potentially a requirement that they do some street work as part of this, too, so, when it gets through it, so. All right, anyone else from the audience like to say something? Okay, council, um...
Mr. Mayor, I would like to mention one thing, and this is going from the plans that were provided. Uh, the entrance, it directly lines up with Madison Street, which is where Ialisco is. So it, fortunately, if, if hopefully, uh, they get Google to work right when people are coming in, they'll come in Madison Street and go right into the park, and they won't be making lots of turns and all of that stuff. So, I mean, that worked out right, not having, and I, my original concern, to be honest, was having the entrance on Davis Street, 'cause I, oh, I saw issues with the median and all kinds of other things. So after going through it and understanding that it's Madison Street, I think that's good. Uh, I, I would like to go ahead and to make a motion to approve resolution R twenty-four oh three. Uh, can we say something along the lines of, uh, with the documented, uh, changes that's been made?
As amended.
As amended?
Second.
And the staff comfortable you have the amendments? I have to ask that. Okay, all right, okay. So we have a motion and a second, any comments from the council?
I just wanted to say that I think this is a great fit, it has a very nice Sebastian vibe to it. You know, it's more environmentally friendly, way better than another hotel. Um, so I commend you for coming up with a business plan that is Sebastian-friendly.
Yeah, and I know a piece of land on Indian River Drive that maybe you can go to the county and convince them to put one of these there.
Right? That'd be so much better.
Instead of that big hotel they're finding on building, you know?
Yeah, very happy not to see condos there.
Yeah.
I think this fits us much better. And, and sewer on, on property's good.
All right, uh, council, we have a motion and a second, let's take a voice vote, please.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartland?
Yes.
Councilmember Nun?
Yes.
Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Dixon?
Yes.
Thank you, guys. Now your hard work starts. This was the easy part.
Mr. Mayor, take five?
Can we take a five, Mr. Mayor?
Five-minute break.
Brian read that one, didn't he?
Okay, I think I'm on. I'm going to call the city council meeting back to order, please. We are now on to new business, item 12A, which is consideration of road closure approval for the usage for, and usage of the CavCor parking lot for Sebastian River Area Chamber of Commerce to host friendly Friday special events. This sounds like a really neat, really neat thing. Mr. City Manager, would you like to?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I didn't leave you much time down there, but...
That's okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, kind of in discussions with the Chamber of Commerce, we had, they had brought an idea or to bring an event called Finally Friday to the city. And within Sebastian, we don't formally have a main street anywhere that we could shut down, so in kind of looking at their options, they brought to the city to shut down Cleveland Street. It will allow the condominium association that's on the east side, close to Indian River Drive. The shutdown will happen west of their entrance, so they can get in and out there from residential units. The letters in your packet are from the business owners around Cleveland Street that support this activity to take place. Discussions with them, we wanted to kind of have a small sample size to see how the public was going to react, how it was going to be received within the public to see, make sure that it could be a successful event. So with that, they came to us, presented the idea to have this event on March 29th, April 19th, and May 24th, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. We have representatives from the Chamber of Commerce here to speak and answer any questions that you have. The consideration for you, before you tonight, is approval to close down Cleveland Street from 5:30 to, or 5:00 p.m. to roughly 9:30 p.m. And then also to allow them usage for overflow parking of CavCor parking lot. It is not a sole use for them of the CavCor. If there are boats, trailers that are already in the lot, they're there. But, you know, typically in the evening, people are pulling their boats, not necessarily launching them. So I don't think you'll see additional boaters. There may be a few, some nighttime fishermen, but the large majority will be pulling their boats out, so it would be lessening the boat traffic within that lot during this time. So I know that they are here if you all have any questions with them as well.
Would you guys like to make a presentation or just discuss this?
Hello?
Hi.
I'm Cheryl Tebow, the President of Sebastian Chamber of Commerce.
How can I help you? Answer your question.
Okay. I have one question. The parking, the businesses, not only along Cleveland, but also the ones that actually are also across from CavCor, are they going to open their parking spaces up to be used during this event as well?
Parking could not be utilized in our spaces because the street will be closed.
Okay, so they can't get in from Coolidge?
No, because then they would, they would have to get onto Cleveland even to get into our parking lot.
Okay.
So we would just reserve our parking for our staff.
Okay, all right.
Just for those few hours.
Okay, all right. Anyone else have any questions?
No.
I'm excited, the chambers, those great events.
I think it's a great thing to do, yeah. No, I'm very happy about, about doing it. You know, as far as CavCor parking is concerned, that's not going to be full except people coming here, so, you know, I don't think that's a real issue to use that. I don't want anybody to think we're giving you the use, exclusive use of the parking lot, but you're going to have plenty of space to park there on that. And the off, the on-street parking that's along Cleveland would be also acceptable for people to use, so, okay. Anybody else have any questions?
I thought this was a long time coming, you know, very similar to Vero's, you know, first Friday in the month, come down there, do a stroll. The only concern I have is the, May 24th is Memorial Day weekend, that date.
It'll be a busy night.
Kick it off.
It'll be full.
All right. With that, I make a motion to move approval.
Second. Okay. And I just had one last question before we, as far as food is concerned, you're taught, you're going to use the food services from the existing rest businesses that are in this area, or are you going to bring in like food trucks, or?
We're going to do food trucks.
Food trucks, or if any of the local businesses want to set up a tent, and they have a food license to do catering, they would be able to bring hot food there and serve it to customers as well.
All right, good. Anyone else have any questions?
No, I'd make a, I already got your motion in second.
Yeah, we're excited.
I just need everybody to say they've said enough.
I've said enough.
All right. We have a motion and a second, and we'll put to, let's do a voice vote on this.
Public input?
Oh, public input. Anyone from the public would like to address this issue? See none. Let's have a voice vote on this, please. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Nun?
Yes.
Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dixon?
Yes.
And Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
And now we're on to item B under new business. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm actually going to turn this one over to Mr. Blankenship and let him give you the full details on this item.
All right, good. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Richard Blankenship, proud to be your Parks and Recreation Director. Tonight, we're asking your authorization to apply for Florida Boater Improvement Program grant to dredge the front of Main Street boat ramp. This will allow boats to safely stage and exit and enter the water, and it's been, my understanding is it's been needed for quite a long time. This is about $190,000 grant that requires a 5% either, which is unique, either cash or in-kind match. So we ask that you provide us authorization to apply for these funds. I'll answer any questions you may have.
Anyone have any questions?
Yes, how long does it take? Is it a one-day thing?
You mean a one-day thing to do the work?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't know.
Yeah. What, I mean, would the ramp have to be closed while it's being done?
Yes, the ramps will have to be closed. I don't know how long it would take, I don't want to mislead anybody, but the ramps will be closed, and it won't be a one day, but it won't be a one month either.
And once we get the grant, then the RFP will have to be put out to do the, to get the work bid.
Right.
Okay.
Can I read the resolution?
Let's get the grant. I move approval.
Can I read the resolution first?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Whoops. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, you may.
No. Resolution number R-2404, Resolution of the City of Sebastian, Florida Providing for Authorization for the City of Sebastian to Make and Prevent a Grant Application for Assistance Under the Florida Boat Improvement Program Providing for Legislative Findings and Intent Implementing Administrative Actions, A Savings Provision, Conflict Severability and Effective Date.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now we have a motion and a second, so let's have a roll call, please.
Who's the second, Mr. Mayor, please?
Second.
Second was?
Now it's me.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Dixon.
Councilmember Nun?
Yes.
Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dixon?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
And Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we now have item number C. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, so this is, and I want for full transparency, at the previous meeting, we had a contract with Connaught Landscaping that was brought before you all that was for swell work on our road paving projects, and it was mentioned that, you know, clarification to the public, there was no cost increase. That was 100% correct. This is a completely separate contract here, so I just didn't want there to be any confusion with this. And with that, I'll turn it over to Karen to let her kind of give some details on it.
So Connaught Landscaping has been under contract for the last two years mowing our ditches and right-ofways, and in that contract, they have two single one-year extensions allowable. We're looking to extend for one year, but they have asked for an increase for two specific zones, ditch zones, within the entire contract. It is within the Consumer Price Index. It's only a 2.9% increase. They have been doing a great job. We have not been getting a lot of complaints from residents. We are looking to continue work with them and are asking for your approval. They are here also if you have any questions.
Questions?
Well, she just answered the two questions I had, was, are they doing a good job? And is it less than the CPI increase? So, I'm good.
Are, are, we going to have an updated schedule that's posted on when mowing is going to be done within each zone, and maybe the areas in the zone?
We did have a meeting with them recently, and we have reworked the schedule a little bit, and it is getting updated on the website. So you can always go to the ditch mowing map on the city website. It should be updated again tomorrow.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to mention that of all the companies that have done this over the years I can remember, they are probably doing the best job, the quickest job. It seems to happen more often than some past companies have done it. I mean, really, they, on my opinion, they've done a really good job at doing what their job is.
That's one of the reasons we just revised the schedule, because they were going a little too fast for us. It's four times a year, and we wanted to space it out, so it was even.
Okay, it's not union work, you know, they can't...
Hey, if they want to do it five times a year, I'm just saying.
They can't move faster.
But they're doing a great job. I mean, they're just really seeing that.
Okay, you like them so much, is that a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the CPI increase and the one-year extension.
Second.
I have a motion, second. Anyone from the public would like to address this? See none? Let's have a roll call, please.
Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
Vice Mayor, Mayor Dixon?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
And Councilmember Nun?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
And item number D under new business.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, item D is a project that was funded in this fiscal year out of the Cemetery Trust Fund. It had been in the CIP project list for a couple of years now. It is for the monument re-leveling at the Sebastian Cemetery. Zones 1, 2, and 3 have a majority of the monuments that have sunken down into the ground, whether they're just, you know, vertical headstones, or if they're just the flat headstones, we're seeing that pretty consistently throughout the cemetery. And so we went out to bid for this item, and we are recommending, staff is recommending the selection of AGG Restoration of Southwest Florida LLC, and authorization for staff to enter into contract negotiations and execution of the contract by the city manager.
And are they going to stabilize the ground under the monuments as they do this?
That is a part of the plan. Not to say that in the future, it's not, I mean, it is Florida, and it's very, you know, the sandy over there, so we'll be some settling, but our plan is to get them back level and go from there.
Okay, good. Thank you, sir. Council, any comments?
I would just like to just clarify, it says the Cemetery Trust, Cemetery Trust Fund, so this money is coming from money that has been earned from the cemetery and people buying plots and things like that. That's what the Cemetery Trust Fund is?
Yes.
That is correct, sir. So when you purchase a plot at the cemetery, a portion of that goes into the trust fund for capital projects such as this.
Okay, well, that's, that's great. I'll make a motion to approve the selection of ACG Restoration for ITB 24-03.
Second.
You have a motion, a second. Any comments, anyone?
Yeah, Mr. Dodd, I have a couple of questions. I just want to check with staff. When you look at the bids on this, this particular one is $129,000, and the closest one to that is 507, and then you have a 937. Is there, is this a guaranteed price here, or do we have anything in there to prevent change orders so this does not rise to those next levels? Because people get the contract, and then they say it's going to cost more, and then you raise the price up. At the end of the day, it will end up being more than the second or the highest price, so.
So I will let our procurement manager, Ms. Graham, handle this one.
Push it, there you go.
Okay, so the pricing for the company, ACG Restoration, they are a restoration-only company. That is the only thing they do. The other vendors that have submitted, these are general contracting companies, so they, their work is more focused on building, you know, larger buildings. It's not coming in to do the restoration for, for cemetery, which is including, you know, leveling out headstones. So we did look at the pricing, that is one thing that I saw, but by looking at the bids that were submitted, again, there's a company that the only thing they specialize in is just the restoration, so they are not a, a general contracting company. Whereas the other two that did submit, that's what they are, those are the licenses that they were submitting. So that accounts for the disparity in price. It's just, it's something that would be simple is, let's say you have one, you have one company that is going to do the, let's say, janitorial service. I could do it with a mop and a bucket, and I can charge you one thing, or you can have a janitorial company where that is the only thing they do and specialize, and they have a labor force, and they're going to charge you more for that same amount of work.
Right, so what's going to keep them from raising this price after they get the contract and continue moving forward?
This is their guaranteed price. This is the price that they cannot exceed, and the contractor has already signed the contract agreeing and supplied a schedule stating how they will do the work for the city. So, and again, I do notice that these, there is a huge disparity in these numbers, but as far as allowing a change order, this vendor has signed it, they've agreed to it, and I'm going to hold them to the price that they submitted on this bid to complete that scope of work that they stated they would for the city of Sebastian.
Is it for me, Mr. Mayor? We can call a vote if you want.
Okay, all right.
I do have one thing to say.
Okay.
I knew you were going to say something, Councilman Jones, so yay, that was my initiation to Sebastian.
Were you testing her?
Yes.
Public input? Did we have public input for this?
Yeah.
Yeah, a public input. Anyone from the public would like to address this? Yes, sir, come for it.
How are you, Council? My name is John Heath. I'm the owner of Heath Monument Company, local owned and operated company here in Vera Beach, Sebastian. I serve actually five counties, but for the line of work that you guys are looking for to do, and I ain't here to bash nobody or do anything, but I do believe the city is fixing to waste $130,000. And my reason for saying that is because if you look at this company, AGG, when you're a monument builder and an owner in the state of Florida, there ain't, we're not Walmart, there ain't one of us in every town. There's one of us in every seven to 10 counties. So we hear about, we kind of know each other. We kind of, we kind of, everybody knows one another, so to speak. This company rolls in, they are glorified, yes, they are a restoration company. You look at their website, they restore headstones. They do not do cemetery leveling, grading, and all that. They come in, when Katrina came through, devastated to some of the cemeteries there, they came in, acid washed them, cleaned them, hot pressure washed, did all that, made them come back brand new. This right here, there's a lot of gray areas in the contract, and one, in the bid package, it did say that it needed to be a licensed funeral monument company. They are not. That's, that's all I got to say about that.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you for your time.
Okay, I'll leave that to the city manager to...
Manage the project.
Yeah, so first off, I just want to thank Mr. Heath. I know he does a lot of the monuments and things in the cemetery and everything of that nature. I had a conversation with our staff. I feel as though they have vetted the vendor, and the price, once again, is going to be a guaranteed maximum price. And, you know, I don't know that there is a such thing as a guaranteed at 100%, we're going to get what we paid for with anyone, but I feel as though staff has done their due diligence, staff has researched this, and we will not make a payment to the company if we do not receive services. And services of what we want at the cemetery and meets our requirements. So you all can be comfortable between myself, procurement, and Mr. Blankenship, who now oversees the cemetery, that we will stay on top of this, and we will make sure that no payment goes out for services that are not rendered per our contract.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right, Council, any other comments?
I guess I got a question now. So does it mean every headstone that needs to be leveled will be leveled there, or we're only going up to $197,000 worth of leveling?
So the bid was pretty clear that it was to include everything at the cemetery. They had a pre-bid opportunity to come out and view the cemetery, walk the cemetery site, so their bid is a guaranteed maximum price to level the monuments at the cemetery. We're not going to pay them a fee up to a certain number of monuments that's not in there. It is for everything at the cemetery to bring it up, back up leveling to grade.
Okay. As I remember, a similar thing when we were talking about the lawn mowing and everything. We had a guy came in for a bid so low, and I said, did somebody take them out and walk them? And they took them out, walked them around the whole city, said this, and the guy lasted like three months and was way out. But if you walk them out, and I trust you, Brian, and I trust staff, that they will not cut a check unless it is done to the, to the requirement, so.
All right, anything else, anyone? Then let's have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Dixon?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Nun?
Yes.
And Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
All right. Madam City Attorney, do you have any matters?
Yes, sir, just one. I did receive an unsolicited email from a law firm, and I forwarded that to you probably a month or so ago, wanting to know whether the city wanted to join in on essentially a class action lawsuit regarding social media and the harms that it does to children. In just taking a poll of other local government attorneys in Florida, I have not found one that's joined in, but I just wanted to bring it forward so you all can give me a consensus no or yes to whether you wanted to go forward. It's a contingency basis fee.
Does anyone have any comments?
No, thank you.
No, thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you. And, you know, I've been getting, I've been getting contacts from people about the Y Sirota. I don't know why they, they saw my name, I guess, and I've had some people call and ask me about that, so we'll see.
Yes, sir, I got that one forwarded on for you.
Yeah, good. Okay, Mr. City Manager?
So I had a, our first kind of kickoff meeting today with the strategic plan consultant, and we kind of were working to, they've done a lot of research on the city since they were awarded the bid, and we finalized the contract and got them a PO, I think, last week or the week before. But in that time, they've done a lot of research. They've got a lot of documents off our website. I provided them quite a few documents, so they're, they're ready to rock and roll going forward. Their first step in what we discussed is to have a workshop-type orientation that would include all of council and all the department heads. They're pretty much going to be the key figures that have individual meetings with the consultant to really get the process started with the first step. So this meeting is not an opportunity for staff, council, or the public to come up with, you know, your thoughts on the strategic plan. It is strictly going to be about the process, what it entails, and direction giving in preparation for the next steps. So kind of just making it, putting it in simpler terms on exactly what everyone can expect as we go forward. So in my discussion with them, I told them that I would work with each of you. We'll get a meeting set up, and we'll have it here in council chambers, kind of a roundtable session on the floor. Public can attend, and it'll be a great opportunity. We'll film it, we'll show it to the public, public can access it, and I think it'll be a great opportunity for not only the public, but also for our staff, to see what the process is going to be and make sure that everyone is on the same page with what we're looking to get out of the strategic plan. So I will have, Margarita and myself will work with you all to determine a time that's best suitable for all five of you. They did request a Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday within the next 30 days. So I know, you know, jobs may conflict a little bit, so I want to make sure that we find a couple of dates that are suitable, and then I can make sure that they're, they're ready to go, and we'll ensure that staff is available at that time as well.
Okay, is he willing to do that in the evening?
Yeah, so we had a discussion today. We talked about doing it morning, evening, whatever works with council's schedule, and then, like I said, we'll make it work within staff's schedule.
Okay, good. Thank you, sir.
So that's a great, I'm really looking forward to it. It was a very positive discussion with them, and it's an exciting thing, and I'm looking forward to going through the process.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and City Clerk, we implemented a new rule this evening. Every charter officer has to say something.
Well, I hope you all have a nice evening after we leave here.
Thank you, you did it.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
I apologize, but I did have one other thing, and it slipped my mind because he is not here tonight.
He didn't come back from the party.
He was here earlier today, but he had something he had to attend to this afternoon. And I just want the public and recognize the years of service that Ken Kilgore has given to the city. I think it was over 16 years at the City of Sebastian as our Chief Financial Officer and Finance Director, but I think what was amazing, when I really went back and looked, was that he has over 50 years of service in, in public service. So he has worked for a municipality or a county for over 50 years. And that is amazing to give back to the public. And I just wanted to take some time to acknowledge everything that Ken has done. He's been a great mentor for me over the last eight, 10 months, whatever the number is at this point. So just want to say thank you to Ken and acknowledge everything he's done for the city. His plan tomorrow will be his last day of full-time employment. However, we're still in some discussions right now with him staying on as, on a temporary basis to assist us as we're going into our very important budget season. So he's going to be continuing to stay on board with us for a little while.
All right, good, thank you. Okay, Councilmember Jones?
No, sir.
Councilmember Nun?
Nothing, thank you.
Vice Mayor Dixon?
I just wanted to say that the mayor and I had a good time at opening day on Saturday. Sebastian Little League started off their season, so that is all. It just looked so exciting. There were a lot of local businesses supporting the Little Leaguers, and we talked to one of the gentlemen who oversees all of the umpires for the area, and they said that the youth sports numbers, at least in Little League, are climbing, which is a really good thing, especially right now, you know, with talking about social media and stuff. We're getting kids off devices and out on the field, and that just made my heart happy, so it was a great, great morning.
Who threw out the first pitch?
Well, that would be the both of us. I got to throw the first softball.
No way, really?
And the mayor threw out the first baseball.
Well, I will tell you that the Vice Mayor looked like she was a professional pitcher, and I was throwing the ball to a T-ball guy, and I couldn't even get it to the mound, so, but it was worth it.
It was a good time.
And that's the one comment I have, is I've been told by everybody that this is a retirement community. Well, you needed to be at that park.
That's right.
Saturday. There were more kids out there than I could count. They were, I mean, it was gigantic, and it was an extremely good, extremely good event with, for the kids that were out there, so. And that's all I've got.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Well, other than, you know, you said a little what, Brian, said about Ken. Ken was a gem here, and I mean, he got the awards for this city for the finance, as long as he was here, every year. We were diamond or double diamond or whatever. And other than that, happy to play.
Yeah, thank you. And if there's nothing else for the good of the order, we're adjourned.